Testing, one, two, three. Testing, one, two, three.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. Will everyone please rise for the invocation to be delivered by Pastor Moore?
Let us pray together. Lord God, we come before you tonight. We thank you for this parish. We pray you'd bless them for their hospitality, that you would meet all their needs. We pray tonight for those that you have called to lead here in Schenectady County, help them with the challenges that they face in life, and grant them great wisdom in the decisions that they make and in the manner of their service. And Lord, we pray for all of ourselves, that we would learn more about grace and mercy and love, that we would help those who are in need, that we would be there for those who have been abandoned, that your kindness and your love would shine through our life. We want to thank you for your faithfulness and your goodness to us and the abundance of provision you have made for our lives. We thank you for it all in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by legislator Constantine. Everyone warm enough? Actually, it was much worse earlier today, but they've got the exhaust fans going, so it's a little bit cooler with the doors open. So that's a good thing. Before we move to our legislative conference, we would like to thank our host this evening, the Empire State Youth Orchestra. E S Y O has provided outstanding music training and performance opportunities for young musicians since nineteen seventy-nine. Beginning with a small single orchestra forty years ago, E S Y O has grown to include twelve performing ensembles, wind and brass choirs, and a free music training program called Chime. E S Y O players are afforded exceptional learning opportunities with professional musicians, renowned conductors, and passionate teaching artists. E S Y O recently purchased this space and will be transforming it into a great rehearsal space for their talented musicians and are also looking to expand their collaboration with other performing arts organizations. We wish them many years of happiness in their new home. The chairman of the E S Y O board, Omar Williams, is here with us this evening. At this time, I would like to recognize Mr. Williams and invite him to come up, introduce any of the other members of the board and staff that are here with us this evening. Mr. Williams.
Thank you very much. As you said, my name is Omar Williams. I am a publics middle school teacher in the area and also an adjunct professor at the local college. And I am so proud to be leading the helm of the board for S E O, as we like to call it, or Empire State Youth Orchestra. I am also a product of S E O. I was a young musician that went through several of the ensembles, and for over forty years, S E O has given service to many musicians and young people throughout this entire area. We've been in almost every single school district that you can think of in the area, and we are so excited to have a place where we can bring the community into us and also continue to help serving all the youth in the area for many more years to come. I am accompanied by several members of our staff. We have our executive director, Becky Callis. We have our financial director, Lisa Stuhlmaker, and we have our marketing director, Justin Cook. And since I am still on summer vacation, I'm going to stop lecturing and I'm going to let them do some more of the talking. Thank you so much for your consideration tonight, and we really look forward to showing more of the building and seeing the progress of S E O's new home.
Thank you. It's also our pleasure to be able to bring our meeting to the village of Scotia in the town of Glenville this evening. Mayor Gifford is here with us tonight. Mr. Mayor, I would like to introduce many members of the village board who were in attendance.
I believe it's just Justin, serving double duty today. And we have to be real careful because this half of the gym is Scotia and that half's Glenville, so we could be... I'm staying over here. But thank you, everybody. Great to have you here. Great to have Empire State Youth Orchestra here. And now, you know, I understand you might be giving some money to them. You can have enough for air conditioning. It'd be great.
Thank you, sir. We also have a couple of presentations to make this evening. At this time, I would like to invite county manager Rory Fluman to join me in the well, as well as our attorney Frank Salmon to join us in the well, to recognize a couple of our longtime employees.
Julie, Julie, come on up. Julie, Jen, Paul, come on up. So it's interesting, you know, we have eleven hundred employees in Schenectady County, you know, nearly that many retirees. And once word started to get out that we were starting to honor people at the five-year, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, I cannot tell you the phone calls that come into my office saying, where's my PIN? When am I going to be honored? So we're doing this every month. We're doing it on the each. Today, we have Julie Copeland and Jen Barnes. Julie, it's thirty years tomorrow. Is that correct? Wow, that's tremendous. So what I'll read is, so it's been thirty years tomorrow. She was into our child protective service in nineteen ninety-seven, was promoted to position of senior caseworker that year in ninety-seven. Julie was promoted to her present position of grade B supervisor in two thousand and one. Present duties involve the development, monitoring, extensive reporting on contracts, maintaining the Office of Children and Family Services, with the adoption of federal family's first legislation. Julie's been critical to identifying those needed services that will meet the definition of evidence-based practice here in Schenectady County. And there's no possible way we can thank Julie for all the work she does with our foster care program, with our adoptive kids program. One of the primary functions of Department of Social Services is to make sure that families and kids are safe. And when those situations arise and they need to hit the family court system or social services system, it's people like Julie that are there to ensure their safety, ensure their happiness and love, and get them into the right home. So Julie, thank you very much. Paul, did you want to say anything? Next, we have Jen Barnes, and I'm going to have deputy county attorney Frank Salmon to give this honor. Chris, unfortunately, is out of town, but with an attorney, I figure we should have another attorney presenting today.
So shockingly, Jen Barnes has worked for the county of Schenectady for the past twenty-five years. She's... Yeah, yes. And that's just for the year that she's worked with me. Jen started working for the county in May of nineteen ninety-seven as an assistant public defender, where she represented the indigent. She did that for approximately six years. Then she moved to the Department of Social Services back when the Department of Social Services employed the attorneys. In November two thousand and four, those attorneys were absorbed into the county attorney's office, and since that time, Jen has served first as a deputy county attorney and now is a senior deputy county attorney. Over the course of Jen's time at the county attorney's office, she's helped assist attorneys, over probably dozens of attorneys that have come through the office, including myself. And the county of Schenectady is definitely better off because of Jen's hard work and dedication. She spent the majority of her career in the county attorney's office prosecuting child abuse and child neglect, ensuring that children will be safe in our county. And since two thousand and twenty-one, Jen has been prosecuting juvenile delinquency cases, ensuring that individuals get the services they need in order to prevent them from recidivism and going towards more serious penalties as they get older.
So at this time, we're going to move to our legislative conference, and the Rules Committee to be chaired by legislator Fields.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Rules Committee has now come to order. Our first item on the agenda is a resolution, resolution number fifty-two, rather, a resolution confirming the appointment of a person to the position of the chaplain at the Glendale Nursing Home. Currently, the appointment there is for Father Stephen U. Kesho. Anyone has any questions regarding this particular appointment?
Move to report.
Move to report. We have a second. Thank you. A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The resolution's been moved. Resolution number fifty-three, a resolution confirming an appointment by the county legislature to the board of the Schenectady Metroplex Development Authority. Last week, we've had a discussion to hear Dr. Horton's presentation. Any further discussions?
Move to report.
I have a couple of questions. How many seats are available in total on the Metroplex board? How many seats total are there on the board, the Metroplex board? I think it's about...
I can't recall in statute. Is it fifteen?
Yeah. Frankie's looking it up right now. I can see his... So typically, we have appointments from municipalities. So this, the appointment for Haywood is actually the supervisor's appointment to this board. I want to say it's... Is it fifteen?
It's in section twenty-eight something of the public authorities law.
It's set toward the statute.
He said fifteen.
Is it fifteen?
It is fifteen.
And are all the seats filled currently?
Yes, all the seats have been filled. Again, every certain municipalities have their appointments, and this is the town of Niskuna's appointment that we're fulfilling at the present moment.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this seat became vacant by a reservation of the representative from the town of Niskuna, so the supervisor refilled that slot.
Understood. Thank you.
I have one quick question on Metroplex also. Do the board members have a specific area that they're responsible for?
So inside the statute of Metroplex, there are actually guidelines whereby it's specified that board members should have certain criterias, in a sense, or functions that they should be doing. So it's very, it's designated in statute as to what they should be doing, yes. May I have a...
Move to report.
Second. Move to report. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. This resolution's been moved. Resolution number fifty-four, a resolution creating a subcommittee of the committee of the workplace development and nominating co-chairs. I believe we have, we're nominating our two legislators here, Sarah Mae Pratt and Omar McGill.
Move to report.
May I have a second? Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The item has been moved. Again, we have another set of appointments here, a resolution number fifty-five, a resolution confirming the appointments of persons to various boards, councils, and commissions. And it's inside, we're appointing two persons here. One is Christine, and then Jude McQueen to the library board of trustees. Move to report. Thank you very much, Miss Mae. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The resolution's been moved. Our next item of resolution is resolution number fifty-six, a resolution to amend the two thousand and twenty-two capital improvement program to provide funding for the Empire State Youth Orchestra for building renovations in the village of Scotia. And that's one of the reasons why we're here in this particular village to have session. Mr. Rory Fluman, I'd like to give us a little outline of this particular use of money.
So what we're proposing tonight is a one-point-five million dollar donation to the Empire State Youth Orchestra. This comes from our ARPA funding. Back in two thousand and twenty, the federal government committed to giving the largest transfer of funds to local governments in the history of the United States of America. What that meant to Schenectady County was that in two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two, we received, over the course of two years, thirty million dollars. This money was specifically geared towards post-COVID or during COVID, whether there are economic recovery aspects, public health recovery aspects, getting America back to where we were previous to COVID. Largely, the first year, two thousand and twenty, in our county, a lot of this money could be used for what they termed revenue replacement. Obviously, in that year, the economy wasn't moving, so sales tax numbers dipped, revenues from the casinos dipped, so a good chunk of this money went to revenue replacements so that our offices of social services, our snowplow drivers, all our other operations could be operating in two thousand and twenty-one. As we're emerging from COVID, the economy has really come back. You know, there's a lot of different discussion about how it's come back and how inflation has creeped in a little bit. But, you know, soon after the year two thousand and twenty into the year two thousand and twenty-one, people started to spend money. People started to go back out to restaurants, bars, the casino, all of our lovely businesses here in Schenectady County, so sales tax came up. So largely, we've been reserving this money for rainy day account or just doing one-time ones for infrastructure within the county. But we're finally at the places we did last month, doing an issuance, looking into the potential purchase of the Duane's Y M C A. And this month, we're here. We've had a terrific proposal from the Empire State Youth Orchestra. As you see in some of the memos, this is a building that they've purchased that we are here in tonight. Previously, they've been housed at Proctors. They're trying to expand. Empire State Youth Orchestra is a wonderful organization that serves over six hundred kids. They would have over five hundred other folks coming here in and out over the course of the week if they get this building up and running. These are programs that are traditionally, you would think, would be in school districts, but as budgets tighten among school districts, you know, unfortunately, as we all know, one of the first things that gets cut is arts and entertainment and local school district music programs. What they would be able to offer here is more higher-level music theory, teaching of music, really a true expansion of arts and entertainment. Local government has a responsibility to arts and entertainment through our hotel bed sales tax. We've helped fund things like Proctors, and we do our SIP grants. So the state government already expects us to have these ties with local groups that fund and promote arts and entertainment. So what we're promoting tonight is an expansion of that through some of our federal grant monies from ARPA to be able to do this grant to the Empire State Youth Orchestra.
Thank you very much. Do any of the members have any questions or comments?
Move to report.
Move to report. To hear first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The resolution's been moved. Our next item on the agenda is resolution number fifty-seven, a resolution to amend the two thousand and twenty-two capital improvement program to provide funding for elevator repairs at the Schenectady County Correctional Facility. And Scott, thank you very much.
Hello, everybody. My name is Scott Tomlinson. I'm a facilities engineer for Schenectady County, here to request authorization to amend the two thousand and twenty-two capital budget in the amount of one hundred and eighty thousand dollars for the correctional facility elevator jack replacement. This is the only elevator serving the original section of the facility, and it's not only crucial to daily operations, but is a requirement by code of a building of this size. The failed elevator was installed in nineteen eighty-five and has an average lifespan of about thirty years. So at thirty-seven years old, this one is due for replacement. We anticipate the new jack and hydraulics to last another thirty to forty years, and once the project is complete, we should be able to last for another thirty to forty years. Thank you.
Anyone has any questions? Move to report. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The resolution's been moved. Thank you very much. Resolution number fifty-eight, a resolution to create and eliminate certain positions at the Schenectady County Department of Probation. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Tim Farrar. I'm the director of Schenectady Probation. We're here to request that our current vacant clerical aid position be changed to a clerk position, which currently has an active civil service list. This is a budget-neutral move. They're both grade-four positions, and this would help us expedite replacing this position.
Thank you very much. Any further questions?
Move to report.
Move to report. May I have a second? Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none. The resolution moved.
Thank you.
Our next item is resolution number fifty-nine, a resolution adopting the operational budget for SUNY Schenectady to serve the operational needs for the period of September one, two thousand and twenty-two to August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. I know in our midst, we have our president, Dr. Stedimono, and he did a presentation. They did a presentation on this last week, and, or last month, really. I don't know if anyone has any other questions than this twenty-nine-point-four-million-dollar budget, where the county is actually making a contribution of roughly two and a half million dollars.
Mr. Chair, we also had a public hearing on this at our last meeting as well.
Thank you very much.
I would move to report.
Move to report. Second. Thank you, Ms. Gatt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. This resolution's been moved. Item number sixty relates to the community college again, authorizing the county manager to enter a memorandum of agreement with SUNY Schenectady County Community College Chairpersons, Administrators, and Directors Association. This is their annual contract.
Move to report.
Move to report. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The resolution's been moved. The next item is item number sixty-one, a resolution approving a capital budget funding request from SUNY Schenectady for a technology infrastructure project. And this is actually receiving authorization from the state to actually use the money to do technology upgrades. It's eight hundred, a little over eight hundred thousand dollars in federal monies that was given to this school, and the state will also match another eight hundred thousand dollars to make a one-point-six-million-dollar technology improvement in infrastructure for the colleges and the classes.
Move to report.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this resolution's been moved. With the chair, being that's the last resolution tonight, Rules Committee is now closed.
Thank you, legislator Fields. So for those of you who are in the audience who have never attended a county legislature meeting before, in order for legislation to be brought to the floor for a vote, it has to go through committee first, and then the members vote to place those items on the agenda for action. And that's what you just witnessed, the meeting of the Rules Committee to be chaired by legislator Fields. Next on our list is a privilege of the floor. Any members of the public, president, who would like to address privilege of the floor, please come to the microphone, give us your name and address for the record, try to keep your comments to about three minutes.
Well, I don't want my back to the camera, so I'm going to move the, at least they get a profile. Okay. I'm happy to be here in front of the county legislature. Once I get through my remarks, you're probably going to say, this is not the way for him to get to the goal that he's seeking. But it's the only way that I think I've been able to achieve at least addressing everyone. Over the past several months, I left several messages at the county legislative office for three legislators who I specified to set up a 10-minute meeting about giving an update on a project in Schenectady County. I also sent emails to each of the three legislators on two occasions and received no response. Earlier this year, I went to the Association of Counties meeting. I thought I could bump into one of you, but only one legislator showed up. I told him about the problem I was having reaching the three legislators. I gave him my card. He said he would bring it up and have someone get back to me, but again, there was no reply. Houston, we have a problem, a communications problem. For the life of me, I can't understand why these three elected officials would be so disrespectful, rude, and offensive as to not answer polite requests for a 10-minute meeting, even if a message was sent back to me through the office that you didn't want to meet. That would have been more respectful than the way this was handled. I am speaking calmly, but inside, I am furious. I don't know what to make of this, but I'm hoping that you will want to meet, that these three county legislators would want to meet. It's about a project in Schenectady County, and I expect a call back. I expect someone to reach out to me. Thank you very much. I appreciate you listening.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor?
I don't know which direction I'm supposed to stand, but I will stand here. I'm Becky Callis, and I'm the Executive Director of Empire State Youth Orchestra. And I just wanted to add to all the kind words that have been already spoken about our organization, and just to thank you all for being here today. And to just give you a little quick overview of what you're going to see if this project goes forward, you're all sitting in a very hot room right now. This room will be air-conditioned. It will be full of 100 musicians playing in an acoustically superior space that just does not exist currently, not only in Schenectady County, but across our region. We do not have a youth music center. And so we're really excited to build this music center in this space and make that happen for our youth, not only in Schenectady County, but bringing in youth from neighboring regions as well to create a really collaborative music space. So that's what I was going to say, and I'll invite Justin up to just add a couple more words as well.
Hi, I'm Justin Cook, 149 North Hole here in Scotia. I also am a proud member of the SEO staff. This project is transformative, to say the least. It's going to take this former school that was built in the 50s and turn it into a state-of-the-art center for musical youth. As Becky said, it's the only one of its kind in upstate New York. Because of the leadership of the Schenectady County Legislature and many other community organizations, Schenectady is positioned very much to be a hub of, the hub of culture institutions, as well as an incubator for the arts. And this building will onboard more space dedicated to not only the performing arts, but specifically youth arts. And if we've learned anything from the pandemic is that music education and the youth arts have been, have been struggling, but they're bouncing back. And this space will allow us to continue to be resilient post-pandemic and into the future. But this will serve more than just SEO students. What you're looking at today and what many toured before is going to be a creative maker space for young musicians. Members and young musicians will be able to come through those doors, find a studio space, and create their art. Where else can they do that? Many of our young musicians form their own quartets, chamber ensembles, duos, and trios. Many of those experiences do make it onto a national stage when you look at many of our alumni. This will be a place where technology, music, and community will intersect under one roof, and here in Schenectady County, the heart of the arts and cultural community in Capital Region. But more importantly, perhaps, this building will be a catalyst for collaboration. Collaboration that will include local school districts to allow school districts through the Capital Region BOCs to potentially expand their music offerings. It will also allow us to collaborate with other arts organizations, including ones based here in Schenectady County and perhaps those outside of Schenectady County. And lastly, it'll also create an opportunity for students to interact with SUNY Schenectady, now the only music school left in the Capital Region, which we actually are starting to see, we had an SEO senior leave our orchestra ensemble and go into study music at SUNY Schenectady this past year. So this money that you're considering for the Empire State Youth Orchestra will also do a considerable amount for the local economy. You heard the county manager mention we bring in between 500 and 600 families within the United, within the 12 greater Capital Region county, but also New York's Hudson Valley and Western Massachusetts and Southern Vermont. Being in Schenectady opens us up for further reach into Western New York, to central New York, but also it's bringing families to a central location. So now, instead of going to five different locations around the Capital Region, they're coming to Schenectady County. They're driving right by the Village of Scotia's Business Improvement District. There's nearby restaurants, and there's a hotel. And what this building will also allow us to do is online more space for conferences, whether that's arts conferences, creative place-making conferences, or simply a trade conference looking for a large space to be able to have breakout rooms and sessions. And I also believe that this space will also be a great companion for the film Schenectady Initiative, allowing this space to also be used for studio space and perhaps creating interesting collaborations with our young musicians. So thank you for this consideration, and I look forward to welcoming each of you back to this space once it's been transformed from what you see today into really a music center for the future.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor? Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor? Anyone else wishing to comment during privilege of the floor? Seeing none, I'll declare privilege of the floor over with. And before I call to order the August regular meeting of the legislature, I would like to take a moment to ask my colleagues to go around the table and introduce themselves. We'll start up here with the head table, if you will. My name is Tony Juzinski. I'm Chair of the County Legislature. I represent the towns of Rotterdam, Duanesburg, and Princeton in District Four. To my right?
Jeff Hall, Clerk of the County Legislature.
And to my left?
Rory Fluman, Schenectady County Manager.
And we'll start over here with Sarah Mae.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Mae Pratt. I'm a member of the county legislature representing the town of Niskuna, town of Glenville, Village of Scotia, and I reside in the hamlet of Alplos.
Good evening.
My name is.
Tom Constantine, also representing Niskuna, Glenville, and Scotia.
My name is Eric Hess. I live in Rotterdam. I represent District Four, which is Rotterdam, Duanesburg, Princeton, the Village of Delanson.
I'm Kathy Gata. I'm also District Three, Village of Scotia, town of Glenville, town of Niskuna.
Hi, my name is Josh Cuomo. I represent District Four, which is Rotterdam, Princeton, and Duanesburg.
My name is Philip Fields, and I am the Deputy Chair of the Legislature, and I represent District Two, which is in the city of Schenectady, or half the city of Schenectady.
Hi, I'm Pete Frizzoni. I represent Niskuna, Scotia, and Glenville, where I live.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Osterlich. I represent Legislative District Three as well, Niskuna, Scotia, Glenville, and I live in Niskuna.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Richard Paterni. I represent District One and the city of Schenectady.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Richard Russo. I also am a District One County Legislature. I live in the north side of Schenectady, and I just want to say thank you to the leadership team of Empire State Youth Orchestra for having us here, for the hospitality, and for letting us come out and be part of this great space that we're looking forward to seeing revitalized. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Omar Sterling McGill. I'm also a District One representative, representing half of Schenectady. I do live in the stockade myself, and I'm excited to be here with you all in Scotia. And I would also like to send my thanks to the Empire State Orchestra. I think you're the Executive Director, Omar? No, no, you're the, you're the board chair, and you have a phenomenal name, so I just want to let you know that.
My name is Gary Hughes, and I'm a county legislator from District Two. I represent the city of Schenectady, reside in the Central State Street neighborhood, and I'm also Majority Leader of the Legislature.
Thank you. We're also joined this evening by Brian McGary, who is a legislator from District Four as well. Brian's joining us virtually. Brian?
I apologize for the impersonal nature, but I've been fighting cancer since 2008, 2009, excuse me, and it's getting more of a bite, but I'm enjoying my representation on the county ledge and a group of people. You can't match. Wonderful, wonderful people. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. And we're also missing this evening legislator Jeff McDonald, who represents District One and the city of Schenectady as well. He's absent this evening. And with that being said, and I'll call to order the August regular meeting of the county legislature, will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Fields?
Present.
Mr. Russo?
Present.
Ms. Pratt?
Present.
Mr. McGill?
Present.
Mr. Constantine?
Here.
Ms. Gata?
Here.
Mr. Frizzoni?
Here.
Mr. Cuomo?
Here.
Mr. Paterni?
Present.
Ms. Osterlich?
Here.
Mr. Hess?
Here.
Mr. McGary?
Here.
Mr. Hughes?
Present.
Mr. McDonald is absent. Mr. Juzinski?
Present.
Fourteen present, one absent.
Thank you. Members received copies of the minutes from the meeting held on July 12th. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are hereby adopted. Clerk will read the list of reports received.
We received reports from the Commissioner of Finance. The department awaits measures and the county clerk.
And the county manager. Thank you. Legislator Hughes with reports from the Committee on Economic Development and Planning.
Mr. Chair, the Committee on Economic Development and Planning met on August 1st and reported to the agenda Resolution 123.
Thank you, sir. Legislator Osterlich with reports from the Committee on Health, Housing, and Human Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee on Health and Human Services met on August 1st, 2022, and reported to the agenda Resolution 124.
Thank you. Legislator Frizzoni with reports from the Committee on Labor and Civil Service.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Labor and Civil Service met on August 1st, 2022, and reported to the agenda Resolution 125.
Thank you. Legislator Paterni with reports from the Committee on Public Facilities, Transportation, and Infrastructure.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. The Committee on Public Facilities, Transportation, and Infrastructure met on August 1st, 2022, reported to the agenda Resolutions 126, 127, 128, and 129.
Thank you, sir. Legislator Constantine reports from the Committee on Public Safety and Firefighting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Public Safety and Firefighting met on August 1st, 2022, and reported to the agenda Resolutions 130 and 131.
Thank you, sir. Legislator Gata with reports from the Committee on Tourism, Arts, and Special Events.
Thank you, sir. The Committee on Tourism, Arts, and Special Events met on August 1st, 2022, and reported to the agenda Resolution 132.
Thank you. Legislator Fields, reports from the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee on Rules met earlier this evening and reported to the agendas 113, 114, 115, 116, 117, 118, 119, 120, 121, and 122.
Thank you, sir. And also, if you would, Committee on Ways and Means.
The Committee on Ways and Means met on August 1st, 2022, and reported to the agenda Resolutions 124, 125, 126, 127, 128, 129, and 130.
Thank you, sir. Our first resolution this evening is Resolution 113-22, sponsors the Committee on Rules. The clerk will read.
A resolution confirming the appointment of a person to the position of chaplain at the Glendale Nursing Facility.
Any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine?
Yes.
Ms. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Frizzoni?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Paterni?
Aye.
Ms. Osterlich?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald is absent. Mr. Juzinski?
Aye.
Fourteen aye, one absent.
Thank you. The resolution is passed. Our next item is Resolution 114-22, sponsors legislator Hughes. The clerk will read.
A resolution confirming an appointment to the Schenectady County Legislature, by the Schenectady County Legislature, to the Board of the Schenectady Metroplex Development Authority.
Any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine?
Yes.
Ms. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Frizzoni?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Paterni?
Aye.
Ms. Osterlich?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald is absent. Mr. Juzinski?
Aye.
Fourteen aye, one absent.
Thank you. The resolution is passed. Our next item is Resolution 115-22, sponsors the Committee on Rules. The clerk will read.
A resolution creating a subcommittee of the Committee on Workplace Development and Nominating Co-Chairs.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Legislator Pratt.
I'd just like to make a few comments. I'm thrilled to have the opportunity to further examine the childcare crisis and work together to identify solutions for families here in our community. Quality childcare has long been too scarce or too expensive for many families. Just this spring, a childcare center in the city of Schenectady permanently closed, resulting in over 9% of the total center-based preschool slots in Schenectady County disappearing overnight. This summer, we learned that the Niskuna Central School District will be postponing offering much-needed universal pre-K for Niskuna preschoolers this fall. I am very concerned with how losses such as these affect our residents of Schenectady County. Childcare costs continue to rise, and working families are struggling to thrive, especially at a time when inflation is driving the cost of everything up, from gas to groceries to utilities. Quality and affordable childcare gives parents the opportunity to show up to work as their very best selves. Supported employees are productive employees. It's possible to attract, retain, and advance parents, particularly women, in the workforce by offering childcare benefits. There is tremendous value to increasing the amount of high-quality daycare and preschool programming available here in our community. I look forward to working with legislator McGill and the rest of this body to identify and implement solutions as soon as reasonably possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Any further discussion?
I'd like just to say, as the Workforce Development Chair, it would be an honor to work with legislator Pratt and the rest of this body to handle this crisis that we do have on our hands. It is super important that we support our working families and our young people, to give them the best quality of life that we can, and it is our job to do that. So we will make sure we work hard and do our due diligence to make sure we will try to find as many solutions as we possibly can to help with this crisis. So thank you for considering me for this.
Thank you. Thank you for your willingness to serve as well. Any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine?
Yes.
Ms. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Frizzoni?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Paterni?
Aye.
Ms. Osterlich?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald is absent. Mr. Juzinski?
Aye.
Fourteen aye, one absent.
Thank you. The resolution is passed. Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 116-22. Sponsors the Committee on Rules. The clerk will read.
A resolution confirming appointments of persons to various boards, councils, and commissions.
Any discussion? Legislator Pratt?
Thank you. As Chair of this body's Committee on Education and Libraries, I'd like to offer my sincere thanks and heartfelt congratulations to both Christine and Jude for their willingness to serve. Both of these individuals bring a great deal of experience and enthusiasm to the table. This responsibility is a volunteer position, and I am grateful to both individuals for their valuable energy and time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing now, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine?
Yes.
Ms. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Frizzoni?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Paterni?
Aye.
Ms. Ostelich?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald is absent. Mr. Juzinski?
Aye.
Fourteen aye, one absent.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 117-22. Sponsors the Committee on Rules. The clerk will read.
A resolution to amend the 2022 capital improvement program to provide funds to the Empire State Youth Orchestra for building renovations in the Village of Scotia.
Any discussion? Legislator Hughes?
Mr. Chair, the rise to support this, I think it is a good example of what we should be doing with our ARPA funds, money that came to us that was intended to help the county recover from the terrible pandemic we went through. And I really have a hard time thinking of anything that could benefit so many people as this program would. ESYO has been involved in the community for a long time, but has not had a permanent home. It is very integral to a number of musically inclined kids in my legislative district and throughout the city, through the Chime Program. I think having it in one place, making it a magnet that will draw people to Schenectady County, and really strengthen the great musical resources that we have, both Proctors, our tremendous music program at SUNY Schenectady, our school districts. As we learned on the tour tonight, some start instrumental music a little bit earlier than others. I'm very proud of the Schenectady City School District that we still try to put instruments in our kids' hands in the second grade. That's not always the case in all of our school districts, but we really do try to promote music, and it is an important part of the fabric of life here in Schenectady County. So I just believe this is money well-spent that will reap benefits, and I hope that it starts this ambitious project on its way to a successful conclusion. Certainly, that needs to include a little bit of air conditioning in this space, but that alone, perhaps, is a reason to vote yes, so I urge my colleagues to support this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Legislator Gavin?
I am going to abstain from voting because I do work part-time for one of their after-school programs, but speaking as a member of the Scotia Bid, I do want to thank the Empire State Youth Orchestra for taking over this building. Justin has a better number than I do of the amount of people that were interested in purchasing, and a lot of them wanting to tear the building down, put up condos or apartment buildings, and the neighborhood was not happy about that. And the neighborhood is very happy that they're going to continue this as a school and bring a lot of people into the Scotia-Glenville area, so it's really going to be a great thing for our town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would just add that any time that this legislative body can support community, support arts, support children, and create additional placemaking opportunities like what the Empire State Youth Orchestra does for us, and it adds to the vibrancy of so many jewels that we have in Schenectady County, the Schenectady Symphony Orchestra, Proctors, all the arts that we have, and this is just one more, so I am proud to say yes to this vote, to support this entity, and I look forward to many years of success.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I would just like to say as well, you know, being a part of this legislative body in the American Rescue Plan Act, I think these are great things that we are doing. This is an amazing thing to be able to help the ESYO to expand and improve and to help more young people, especially through coming out of, as we still come out of the pandemic. I think more opportunities like this, more resources that we can provide can, you know, not get us back to normalcy, but help our youth to get to where they were before and improve where they're going. And being from the arts and by self, having an art-backed home as far as a musician and acting, anytime that we can do anything to help the youth and have outlet as art, I think it's awesome, so I'm happy to vote aye on this.
Thank you. Any further? Seeing now, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Ms. Pratt?
Yes, this is a very worthy investment, and I'm happy to vote aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine?
Yes.
Ms. Gata?
Abstain.
Mr. Frizzoni?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Paterni?
Aye.
Ms. Ostelich?
Yes, for all the reasons my colleagues mentioned, absolutely.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald is absent. Mr. Juzinski?
Aye.
Fourteen aye, one absent, one abstaining.
Thank you. The resolution passes. Our next item is Resolution 118-22. Sponsors the Committee on Rules. The clerk will read.
A resolution to amend the 2022 capital improvement program to provide funding for elevator repairs at the Schenectady County Correctional Facility.
Any discussion? Seeing now, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine?
Yes.
Ms. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Frizzoni?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Paterni?
Aye.
Ms. Ostelich?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald is absent. Mr. Juzinski?
Aye.
Fourteen aye, one absent.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 119-22. Sponsors the Committee on Rules. The clerk will read.
A resolution to create and eliminate certain positions at the Schenectady County Department of Probation.
Any discussion? Seeing now, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine?
Yes.
Ms. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Frizzoni?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Paterni?
Aye.
Ms. Ostelich?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald is absent. Mr. Juzinski?
Aye.
Fourteen aye, one absent.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Prior to our next resolution, I would just like to acknowledge SEC President Dr. Sedimono was in the audience this evening. Thank you for attending. Our next item is Resolution 120-22. Sponsors the Committee on Rules. The clerk will read.
A resolution adopting the operational budget for SUNY Schenectady to serve the operational needs for the period September 1, 2022, to August 31, 2023.
Any discussion? Legislator Hughes?
I'd also like to thank the administration at SUNY Schenectady for a very thorough job and an excellent presentation of the budget two meetings ago. In addition to my role here at the County Legislature, I'm also a member of the Board of Trustees at SUNY Schenectady, and understandably, pretty proud of the accomplishments that we have there. I'd like to make the point tonight that once again, this legislative body is committing Schenectady County to a 2% increase in the local share of this college, and also remind people that our ongoing commitment to the capital improvements at the college constitutes about $10 to $11 million in additional spending that we provide to maintain buildings, to work with the SUNY system and with the foundation, to expand the physical plant at the college. It's a great partnership. The college and the county are, in my opinion, working as well together as we ever have, probably better than we have in many years. So I strongly urge you to support this and vote yes. It's a great asset to the county.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing now, will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine?
Yes.
Ms. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Frizzoni?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Paterni?
Aye.
Ms. Ostelich?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald is absent. Mr. Juzinski?
Aye.
Fourteen aye, one absent.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 121-22. Sponsors the Committee on Rules. The clerk will read.
A resolution authorizing the County Manager to enter into a memorandum agreement with SUNY Schenectady County Community College Chairpersons, Administrators, Directors, and Directors Association.
Any discussion? Seeing now, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine?
Yes.
Ms. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Frizzoni?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Paterni?
Aye.
Ms. Ostelich?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald is absent. Mr. Juzinski?
Aye.
Fourteen aye, one absent.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 122-22. Sponsors the Committee on Rules. The clerk will read.
A resolution approving a capital budget funding request from SUNY Schenectady for a technology infrastructure project.
Any discussion? Seeing now, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine?
Yes.
Ms. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Frizzoni?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Paterni?
Aye.
Ms. Ostelich?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald is absent. Mr. Juzinski?
Aye.
Fourteen aye, one absent.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next item is Resolution 123-22. Sponsors legislator Hughes. The clerk will read.
A resolution regarding the conveyance of an easement to Niagara Mohawk Power Corporation.
Any discussion? Legislator Hughes?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. It is just an easement, but it is an easement for Niagara Mohawk on the Schenectady County Airport property, and it enables the Air National Guard and the Department of Defense to upgrade some facilities at the air guard base, which in the long term accrues back to the county, because the more facilities you have and the more vibrant your base is, the more likely it is to stay open when we come through another round of base closures. There's tremendous economic development that comes to the county, and we're here in Scotia and Glenville tonight, and a lot of that impact lands right in this area and the form of employment, and so this is a worthwhile thing that we need to do.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion? Seeing now, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mr. Russo?
Aye.
Ms. Pratt?
Aye.
Mr. McGill?
Aye.
Mr. Constantine?
Yes.
Ms. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Frizzoni?
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo?
Yes.
Mr. Paterni?
Aye.
Ms. Ostelich?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald is absent. Mr. Juzinski.
Aye.
Fourteen aye, one absent.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next name is Resolution 124-22, sponsors Legislature Osterlich. The clerk will read.
A resolution to accept monies from Florence Coffee for improvements to the Glendale Nursing Home and approve budgetary amendments.
Any discussion? Seeing now with the clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Ms. Pratt.
I'd like to offer a heartfelt thanks to Ms. Coffee for her generosity, and with that, I vote aye.
Mr. McGill.
I'd like to express those same sentiments to Ms. Coffee, and I vote as aye as well.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Ms. Gadda.
Yes.
Mr. Frizzoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterni.
Aye.
Ms. Osterlich.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald is absent. Mr. Juzinski.
Aye.
Fourteen aye, one absent.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next name is Resolution 125-22, sponsors Legislature Frizzoni. The clerk will read.
A resolution to create a certain position at the Schenectady County Public Health Services.
Any discussion? Seeing now with the clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Ms. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Ms. Gadda.
Yes.
Mr. Frizzoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterni.
Aye.
Ms. Osterlich.
Yes.
Mr. Hess.
Yes.
Mr. McGary.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald is absent. Mr. Juzinski.
Aye.
Fourteen aye, one absent.
Thank you. The resolution has passed. Our next name is Resolution 126-22, sponsors Legislature Paterni. The clerk will read.
A resolution to amend the 2022 capital improvement program to provide additional funding for the fleet replacement program and the Department of Public Works.
Any discussion? Seeing now with the clerk, please call a roll.
Mr. Fields.
Aye.
Mr. Russo.
Aye.
Ms. Pratt.
Aye.
Mr. McGill.
Aye.
Mr. Constantine.
Yes.
Ms. Gadda.
Yes.
Mr. Frizzoni.
Yes.
Mr. Cuomo.
Yes.
Mr. Paterni.